I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. Can we have a moment of silence for our troops and our law enforcement officers to come home safe? Thank you. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Koppel. Freeholder Nara.
Here.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. We have some recognitions.
Yes, first proclaiming November 2017 as Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing John Bischoe Jr. on his retirement from the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical Schools Board of Education. Next is recognizing Cheesequake Elementary School and their achievement as a National Blue Ribbon School for 2017. Next is recognizing St. Francis Cathedral School on their achievement as a National Blue Ribbon School for 2017. Next is proclaiming November 2017 Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Middlesex County. Next proclaiming November as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in Middlesex County. And last proclaiming November 14, 2017, as National Adoption Day in Middlesex County.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Deputy Director Tamaro. All four.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
If Mr. Bischoe would please come up. Freeholder Ken Armwood, you want to join me?
Well, sir. The board wanted to recognize Mr. Bischoe for his years of service. After 22 years as a member of the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical High School Board of Education, and he served 12 years as President and six years as Vice President. He's had a commendable term on there, and he's really been a great public servant to us, dedicated to the children first and foremost. And we can't certainly fill his shoes. It's going to be a tough act to follow, but he really did an exemplary job there, him and his colleagues, and he led that board through many positive changes that we've gone through. He's been very active in his union with the Central Labor Council and the AFL-CIO Committee on Political Education, and he even got his bachelor's degree at the National Labor College. So, we commend you, John, for your years of service, and thank you very much and wish you nothing but the best and good health. Thank you.
I thank the Director, Freeholders, and my old friend John Palamina. But the one common denominator, I can say, 22 years on the Board of Education, the one positive has always been that the Board of Chosen Freeholders, along with the Board of Education, has always looked out for the welfare of the young people in our county. Budget constraints, whatever, the Freeholders have always tried to give as much as they can when they can. If you look at what we have, we have two academies in the county, we built a brand-new school in Perth Amboy, and some of our schools are nationally recognized. So, yes, the Board of Education can take some credit for that, but it goes to administration of students and also with the Board of Chosen Freeholders for supplying the funds to help us achieve that goal. So, on my way out the door, and Ron's not going to kick me out the door, but on my way out, I just want to thank for the Board of Education, thank all the Freeholders for all the support you've given us over the years, and I'm sure you will continue to do so. Thank you.
We also have here two schools that we're going to recognize. Cheesequake Elementary School, do we have representatives? Come on up. And we also have St. Francis Cathedral School. Do we have representatives here? Please come on up. I'm going to say some comments, and I'll have my colleague, Freeholder Ken Armwood, who is the Chair of the Education Committee, to say some comments. Cheesequake Elementary School is worthy of special recognition because they were honored and recognized for a National Blue Ribbon School. And Cheesequake Elementary is one of nine schools in New Jersey to earn this top honor. That is commendable. The first one in Old Bridge to receive the national status. So, Cheesequake Elementary School is a Title I-K through five elementary school, and it has done an exemplary job, and we want to commend you for that. Also, we have the St. Francis Cathedral School, who was here, who also received a National Blue Ribbons Award for overall academic performance and in progress in closing achievement gaps among student groups. Their English and mathematics is among the highest in the country. That's amazing, and that's commendable. So, we really want to commend you all for those accomplishments because it takes a whole team to accomplish that, and obviously, it's always challenging, but you really did a job, and you stepped up to the plate. We can't thank you or congratulate you enough. Freeholder Armwood, would you like to say some words?
I don't know if I can.
Cheesequake Elementary School. And you want to take separate photos with Cheesequake Elementary School? We can take a photo.
We can't.
Come on, Ken, get in there. Would someone like to make some comments, whoever it may be?
Yeah, I'm the Principal of Cheesequake Elementary School, so it's a tremendous honor to be here, and I thank the Freeholders for this invitation tonight. Truly special moment for our school. You know, in about 30 seconds, some of the reasons I think our school's achieved this level of success, first of all, the teachers and staff in my school are spectacular. We use state assessment data to pinpoint our weaknesses, and we work to strengthen them. We have a very diverse school, and we celebrate our diversity in numerous ways. We have an extensive character education structure that we use as the foundation upon which all of our academics are built. The technology we have, our teachers use that to enhance teaching and learning daily. We just have great parents, hard-working students, and you know, the comment that was just made, that we're a team, we're a team and a family, we work together, and we strive for excellence daily. So, I just couldn't be prouder of the student, staff, and entire Cheesequake community. And again, it's a tremendous honor, so I thank you so much on behalf of the school and the town of Old Bridge to have us here this evening for this special recognition. Thank you.
So, I would like to thank all of the Freeholders for recognizing us here tonight. It is indeed a great honor to be here. We just got back from Washington, where we were recognized in Washington along with all of the other National Blue Ribbons schools. As my colleague here just mentioned, it is really a team effort on all of the outstanding staff members that we have. The children work very hard. Of course, we're a faith-based school, we're a Catholic school, so we integrate our values, our Catholic values within our curriculum and work very hard every day. So, I just want to thank you for having me here tonight, and I appreciate the recognition.
For those of you that received awards, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to.
There's two more.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more?
Yes. Homeless Youth Awareness Month for Freeholder Valenti and Lung Cancer.
Freeholder Valenti.
On June 7, 2007, New Jersey Senators Frank Lotenberg and Bob Menendez, along with Florida Senator Mel Martinez, introduced legislation to designate November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. Each November, the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders takes the opportunity to bring attention to the seriousness of the plight of homeless youth and to recognize the programs and individuals who advocate for their basic need. Homeless youth are individuals aged 18 to 24 who lack parental, foster, or institutional care. These young people are sometimes referred to as unaccompanied youth. Although the numbers vary by location, research has shown that homeless youth are incredibly difficult to recognize and/or accurately count. Their histories often involve attempting to escape from an unmanageable situation, and most have experienced some sort of trauma. Under Middlesex County's Housing Continuum of Care, we have established a Homeless Youth Subcommittee. These individuals and agency representatives, some of whom are here tonight to accept the resolution, know that unless our homeless youth are connected to programs and services to get them off the street and away from day-to-day dangers to which they are exposed, these youth remain at risk and in jeopardy. Thank you for your commitment and diligence in working with our youth in Middlesex County and bringing attention, advocacy, and assistance to the homeless youth in our communities. I have a resolution on the Board of Freeholders, I'm not going to read it, it's kind of long and lengthy, but this is to announce that November has been proclaimed National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and that our Board of Chosen Freeholders is committed to working on behalf of homeless children, teens, and young adults to ensure their right to be safe, healthy, and prepared for the future. And I have some resolutions here to give out to those who are here for this event. Will you please come forward?
Freeholder Nara, you want to join me? Thank you very much. Stephanie, you want to come on up here? So, some of you may recognize Stephanie, some of you may not. Stephanie was here back in, I'm going to say, the mid-spring, somewhere's in there, and had come to the podium here to ask us to help promote lung cancer awareness. And so, we spoke to her after the meeting, and what she basically was looking for was some type of program where we had a flag raising. And so, we had that flag raising this past Friday because November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And so, we put the program together. Stephanie is the designer of the flag that we have flying down here on the corner of Bayard and Kirkpatrick. Do I have the right street? Anyone want to correct me if I'm wrong? So, down here, we have the flag flying, and I want to present Stephanie with a copy of the resolution. We had in as a guest speaker Karen Itsky from Lung Force out of Philadelphia, and if you want to say more on that in a few minutes, I'll let you. But I just want to read the resolution because we hear, you know, so much about cancer, but we never really hear a lot about lung cancer. And so, in doing the research to put the resolution together, it was just some facts that I'd just like to share. So, whereas one to 15 people a year are diagnosed with lung cancer, approximately 160,000 lives are lost each year to lung cancer. And whereas lung cancer kills twice as many women as breast cancer and three times as many men as pancreatic cancer. And whereas approximately 130,000 lung cancer deaths were due to smoking each year from 2005 to 2009, and approximately 7,000 were from secondhand smoke exposure in 2016. Smoking is not the only cause of lung cancer. Other known causes include exposure to secondhand smoke, air pollution, radon, and asbestos. Whereas, in the last 39 years, lung cancer death rate has fallen 29% among men while increasing 102% among women. Since the peak death rate for men in 1990, the death rate among men has fallen 41%. Since the peak death rate for women in 2002, the death rate for women has fallen 15%. Now, therefore, I, Ronald G. Rios, Director of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Middlesex County, do hereby proclaim November 2017 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Middlesex County, and encourage all residents to join in supporting this campaign to work towards a healthier lifestyle and support the fight against lung cancer. So, Stephanie, this is for you. Freeholder Nara is in charge of our health services. I don't know if you would like to say something?
No, this is your, you took this baby's.
Okay. Stephanie, would you like to say something?
I can't reach you.
No, we're going to get it.
Here you go. I think I have enough.
Perfect. All right. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, perfect. I just want to thank the Freeholders, especially Freeholder Kenny, for being supportive in this. A statistic that he didn't mention, but I think it's important to note, is that lung cancer is the second-most common cancer in both men and women around the world, and it's the leading cause of cancer deaths. And smoking, obviously, is not the only cause for cancer, yet shockingly, it receives the least amount of funding per case in research. And so, it's important to inform people about this because most people get diagnosed in stage three or four when there's not much that can be done, where survival rates are very, very low. And so, the importance of finding out during stage one and stage two is really critical. And so, I want to thank all of you for helping this push and bringing awareness to the residents and viewers of the Middlesex County. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We did honor, at the flag raising, Sandy Larson, who is an attorney here in New Brunswick and is from North Brunswick. She is a survivor of lung cancer, and one of the things that she told us about while she was talking to the people that were here was just how wonderful the Cancer Institute was here in New Brunswick, how great the people were that were helping her, that took care of her, and just the fact that we have this wonderful asset right here in our backyard, she says, is a great thing for Middlesex County. And so, I just wanted to pass that on, too, so. I know John Bischoe has a prior engagement to leave, so if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave.
I, you know, I'm glad to sit here, to listen to everything, but I do have a prior engagement in a place called Mayberry. I only know there's milk out.
You're welcome.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Each Freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's Office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Deputy Director Tamaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Board of Chosen Freeholders, regular meeting October 26, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Board of Chosen Freeholders, regular meeting November 2, 2017 at 6:00 PM.
Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Deputy Director Tamaro. All call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of Freeholders. Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Business Development and Education Department, Office of Arts and History, the new exhibit over there, over here, New Jersey During World War I, which commemorates the 100th anniversary of America's involvement in World War I, opened yesterday, November 12, at the Cornelius Lao House, River Road in Piscataway. Explore the story from the battlefield to the home front in this milestone exhibit showcasing an array of artifacts. The exhibit runs through December 30, 2018. The following events will be held at East Jersey Old Town Village 1050 River Road in Piscataway. On Sunday, November 19, at 2:00 PM, owning New Jersey, history and the land records, learn how archives are a very valuable resource, providing information for historical and genealogical researchers. On Sunday, December 3, at 2:00 PM, photography and videography. Learn how arts and history organizations can best capture images and videos of their programs and exhibits. These events are free of charge. Text CULTURE to 56512 for more details and to explore everything, arts, history, and culture. And also, from the Office of Workforce Development, I'd just like to say, I was very happy to see the Second Annual Veterans Job Fair and Resources Fair. We had a good turnout, larger than last year. It was actually to the point where, when I got there, there were three employers fighting over one veteran, trying to hire her on the spot. They actually followed her out the door into the parking lot, to her car, all trying to hire her, and that's the response that we want from that. You know, the best way to support our veterans is also to make sure, not only that they're not homeless, but that they also have jobs and that they can take care of themselves. So, it was a great turnout. I want to thank everyone who came out and made it a success. That concludes my report. Thank you, Freeholder Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Charlie Kenny. Thank you, Freeholder Director. Roosevelt Park Family Ice Skating Rink will open on Wednesday, November 15, at 5:00 PM. The rink is open for sessions from 5 to 9 on Wednesday to Friday, and from 1:30 to 8:30 PM on Saturday and Sunday. Also, as the holidays quickly come upon us, before we know it, Christmas will be here. You might see a Christmas commercial pretty soon. Tickets are now on sale for Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat at the State Theater. 2017 marks the 23rd anniversary, and performances will be December 28 at 7:00 PM, the 29th at 7:00 PM, and the 30th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Get your tickets now at the State Theater box office for a wonderful family event. More detailed information about these events and all our parks can be found at the Middlesex County website, at the Parks and Recreation page. And just, this event sells out every year, so if you're interested, make sure you get your tickets early. That's all I have, Director. Thank you. Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Chanty Nara.
Thank you, Director. On Wednesday, November 8, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, in conjunction with the Departments of Infrastructure Management and Community Services, loaded in excess of 60 pallets of donated items onto box trucks to be transported to assist the victims of the hurricane in Puerto Rico. These items included laundry detergent, water, baby goods, and numerous other essentials. Sheriff Mildred Scott spearheaded this initiative in conjunction with this board. On behalf of the Department of Public Safety and Health and this board, we would like to commend and thank all the residents and businesses who donated for these much-needed supplies for our fellow citizens in Puerto Rico. This past Saturday, the Environmental and Recycling Divisions of the Department held its final e-waste recycling day for this calendar year. Televisions, monitors, keyboards, and the like were collected from county residents free of charge for subsequent recycling. The record number of residents bringing these electronic items shattered all previous records. I would like to commend our divisions for their dedication, commitment, and their hard work in making this such a success. As this year is coming to a close, the schedule for 2018's recycling event is forthcoming and will be posted on the county's website. And I just wanted to take a moment, I know probably Freeholder Valenti is going to mention this, but last weekend, I stopped into the caregivers retreat that was put on by her department, and it was a wonderful event for people in our county who are taking care of family or friends who are in need. And I stayed there for about an hour, and I listened to one of the speakers, and I think this is a marvelous program, so I just wanted to commend Freeholder Blanquita Valenti, as well as her division for the excellent work they expended putting together that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder Deputy Director Charlie Tamaro.
No report this evening, but they did start advertising the Hess trucks already, so. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Blanquita Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Department of Community Services, on November 4, 70 caregivers attended the Office of Asian Disabled Services Second Annual Caregiver Retreat. Participants heard two engaging speakers and had the opportunity to pose questions to a panel of professionals. Thirteen agencies also attended to provide information on supportive services for caregivers. Recognizing the challenges of providing care, the retreat is designed to provide a brief respite and lets caregivers know they're not alone. It also equips them with a variety of resources and tools to use at home. And from the Adalowski Mental Health Center, one of the four pre-vocational work units of the center's partial care program recently held a bake sale for hurricane relief. Since a number of the members of this unit have family in Puerto Rico, they decided to dedicate 100% of the proceeds of their efforts directly to Puerto Rican hurricane relief. The group, which consists of approximately 12 members, began a two-day effort of shopping and baking to generate enough fresh baked goods for the sale. The effort was highly successful, with $650 being raised for donations. And finally, from our Office of Human Services, a reminder to veterans and their families to attend the annual Veterans Outreach Forum, which is being held, oops, on November 18 from 9 to 12 at the Woodbridge Community Center. Valuable information on services and benefits will be shared, and the admission is free. And that's the end of my report, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Valenti. I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a healthy one. Spending it with your family is something that we all can be thankful for. Okay. Nikki, do we have any resolutions to be added?
No.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
No.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. 1826, I think you know how I feel about this. It sends a bad message for the county to be spending $23,000 on bottled water. The bad message is regarding our tap water here in New Brunswick, and I don't understand why this expenditure is being made, but my other comments are related to two projects that T&amp;M Associates are involved in here in my city of New Brunswick, 1831 and 1836. Do you know if either of these contracts were bid publicly, and if they were, can you tell me how many? me how many bidders there were?
These are professional services that they do not need to be bid. They're pre-qualified from the beginning of the year.
And can you tell me why you selected T&amp;M Associates?
Because they've had a track record of their performance that we feel comfortable with the recommendations from the engineering department. Anything else you want to add, Rich?
No, they were basically evaluated in terms of the firm doing the job and getting it done within the time.
Okay, and you're speaking about the intersection near the New Brunswick train station being reconfigured, the engineering services for that?
Both.
Both, okay. And can you tell me a little more about exactly what is going to go on there, as we're paying them $490,000 to re-engineer this intersection? What's the plan for that, and what's the timeframe, and why is it so much?
I don't understand why it's so much, but they will be redoing the, still replacing the traffic signal equipment, redoing the roadway, striping sidewalks, curbs. The Spring Street will be extended into the intersection, being a four-way intersection, and they will be totally upgrading, if necessary, coordinating with the traffic signals in the area.
Okay, and that'll require an easement from the Parking Authority, correct? For Spring Street to be brought through?
Yes.
Okay, and has that been secured?
No.
Okay. Also want to ask about 1833 and 1834, the remediation of the building oil tank plume from the former county building. Does this mean that the remediation is completed?
Rich?
No.
Okay, so it says final payment in the amount of $64,000. Does that mean that this company is done with their part of the job, or is a new company being brought in? What exactly does this mean?
This was to remove debris from the excavation, from the demolition of the deck that was there, that was needed to get out in time so that it did not spread the pollutants there. They are still testing, and we've been talking about the remediation plan.
Okay, and where was all that waste taken?
I do not know the specific name, but it goes to a certified appropriate facility. It is regulated, replaced.
Okay, I'll follow up with the company. And then, the only question remaining is, what's the timeframe on actually finishing the remediation of the pollution that the county caused on this site?
At this time, they're still going and trying to determine the magnitude and the limits of the contamination, and until they get a handle on that, they can't really project the timeframe.
Okay, so it could be years into the future.
I guess, yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on any resolutions listed?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Deputy Director Tamar, seconded by-
Sir-
He wants-
Do you want the general public when you talk, or do you want a resolution if you have other?
I'm sorry, not a resolution.
Okay.
Seconded by Fielder Valenti. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamar?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Okay, any freeholders have any resolutions to be voted separately?
Freeholder Director, I have 17-1861.
Anyone else? Okay.
Hey, Freeholder Director, a motion is in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 17-1810 through 17-1933, and resolution number 17-1861 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valente, seconded by Deputy Director Tamar. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes.
Freeholder Director, it would now be appropriate to consider resolution number 17-1861, which was excluded by Freeholder Armwood.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Fielder Valente, seconded by Fielder Tamar. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
President's not voting.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamar?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes. At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Koulas. My address is 130 Longfield Court in East Brunswick, and I would just like to take a moment to thank our Freeholder Board for acknowledging Homeless Youth Awareness Month. I would like to bring attention to our ribbons, and as you can see, they are neon green, and they have a silver pin. And we specifically chose the color neon green, not just because we wanted it to stand out, but because we wanted people to ask questions. It stands out boldly, and it does definitely get the public's attention. And we decided to put a unique silver key on it to represent what is a door lock, you know, to someone's front door. Homeless youth is a terrifying experience. It's bone-chilling, whether it be summer or winter. Many homeless youth are on the run, they're afraid, they're scared, and they need our attention. They need more than our attention, they need us to look out for them and to keep them safe. So, there's definitely a very powerful meaning in this month, and I am greatly appreciative to our Freeholder Board for, you know, passing this resolution. And I would like to take a moment to give each and every one of you a key and a ribbon, if that's okay?
Sure.
Freeholder Director, your pleasure.
My pleasure. Thank you. Sure. Thank you.
I have one already.
Did I leave anyone out? I'm sorry. Okay, but-
Freeholder Calphol.
But I would like to greatly thank you for your time, and it's a wonderful thing that you guys did tonight. And I would also like to thank the Director of Human Services, Melissa Lewis, for all the work that she does and all the support that she gives us. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Monique Danielle. I live at 97 Crestview Drive, Willenboro, New Jersey. I am also the author of Forgotten Pieces, which is a life skills guide for teens and young adults. I'm the CEO of Monique Danielle Production. I'll give you a little background about me. My brand, Monique Danielle, we have a cable show that was out called Style Sports Entertainment. We have a radio show that was out called The Monique Danielle Show. The third thing on our brand was we launched in 2015, The Monique Danielle Collection, which is skincare, makeup, and cosmetics. And then, as of this year, 2017, May 20th, I became the author of Forgotten Pieces, a life skills guide for teens and young adults. The reason that I'm here is I wrote this book because my daughter is now 21, she's in college. But before she went to college, all the kids would congregate at our house, and they would say, "Mommy Mo, you know, all of us, we don't want to go to college, some of us do, some of us don't." I said, "Well, I have to tell you guys, there are options. You can go to college, you can go to a trade school, you could go in the military. Don't feel like a failure just because you're not going to attend college." I did attend college, and I went to a trade school, but you have to do what's in your heart to do. So, in my book, I teach them time management, communication skills, how to pick a career versus a job. I teach them how to find their divine purpose, the power of "I am," because as we all know, life skills has been taken out of the schools. Most schools think the parents are teaching it, the parents think that the schools are teaching it, so then, no one is teaching it at all. So, a lot of the kids are now, our students are now kind of lost. They don't know what to do, they don't know how to dress for Career Day, they don't know how to dress for a job presentation, they don't know what to wear, they don't even know how to be their own person and follow their own dreams, because they're too busy trying to follow the person in front of them. So, the reason I'm also here is because I wanted to introduce myself to the panel, and I wanted to know if there's any type of funding or programs that my program of life skills can be brought into the Middlesex County. We're trying to get it into all the school systems in New Jersey as of now, and I wanted to know if there was any direction you guys can give me, or who I can speak to, to try to help me push the Forgotten Pieces Life Skills Guide into this county.
The only recommendation I would recommend to you off the top of my head would be to speak to the county executive superintendent of schools-
Okay.
-who might be able to-
Give me some direction.
...guide you, and who to speak to, I would imagine, maybe guidance counters or local superintendent of schools in each school district.
Okay, because some-
I know, it used to be that they had a round table with all of the superintendents from the local school districts, but as the Freeholder Director said, your best bet would be to see the county superintendent and find out when that round table happens, and then maybe you could present to all of them at once, and that would probably be your best bet.
Wow, thank you, because I'm going to different counties, and everyone has a different protocol, so I said, "Instead of running around the 561 municipalities, maybe if I go to the Freeholders' meeting, someone would think that this is an important subject for our students to learn and give me the proper direction." Again, I do have cards, if you don't mind, I would like to give everyone a card, or give it-
Give back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And again, my name is Monique Danielle, I am the author of Forgotten Pieces, I'm on Amazon, Google, I'm everywhere, I'm on like 33,000 websites, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Hackett. I'm the New Jersey State Director with the Humane Society of the United States. Our address is 700 Professional Drive in Gaithersburg, Maryland. I'm a Burlington County resident currently, former lifelong county, Middlesex County resident. Last month, I had the privilege of coming to the meeting, and it was kind of a last-minute opportunity for me on my way home from doing some rescue transports for Puerto Rico with the recent hurricanes, and I had discussed the issue with you here about humane community cat management in our county here, which is the second most populous county in the state of New Jersey. And after that meeting, when I initially brought the situation to your attention, I had circulated a coalition letter that we frequently use in a lot of other jurisdictions about this issue. And to be completely honest with you, I was totally blown away at the level of support for TNVR here in Middlesex County, and the support, wide-scale support for the county Freeholders here in Middlesex to join the four other counties that have just most recently already passed resolutions, non-binding resolutions endorsing humane community cat management in our county here. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to share this for the public record and share it with the Freeholder Board, and then I had a follow-up question. So, just to quickly summarize, "The undersigned organizations and parties and their affiliated individuals in membership do hereby implore the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders to adopt a resolution supporting and encouraging trap neuter vaccinate return for community cats in Middlesex County," which follows Essex, Burlington, Camden, and Gloucester Counties, who have already passed similar progressive resolutions encouraging the municipalities within their counties to adopt TNVR. And the signatories on this letter include the Humane Society of the United States, our organization, People for Animals, Dr. Lauren Collins Zerflu from Cranberry Board of Health, Yardville Animal Hospital, North Brunswick Humane Association, Lawyers in Defense of Animals, Lap of Love Veterinary Hospice, Katie's Pet Depot in North Brunswick, Best Friends Animal Society, Scarlet Paw's Animal Welfare Network here in the county, Just Cats Veterinary Care, the Animal Protection League of New Jersey, Karma Cat and Zen Dog Rescue Society, Happy Homes Animal Rescue based in Olbridge, Neighborhood Cats, Animal Alliance of New Jersey, Faith Veterinary Clinic, Sammy's Hope based in Sayerville, Central Jersey Animal Shelter Organization, Paws for Peace in Middlesex Borough, New Beginnings Animal Rescue in East Brunswick, the League of Humane Voters, Catitude, Central Jersey Veterinary Clinic, Holistic Cat Rescue Rehabilitation, McPaw's Residents in Middlesex County for Progressive Animal Welfare, Jersey Girls Animal Rescue, that's probably my favorite, and Sayarbrook Veterinary Hospital. And actually, at the date of this meeting today, I had nearly a dozen more signatories, I just didn't have time to get on here today, because I was in Trenton testifying about the New Jersey SPCA situation. So, we have well over 30 signatories on this letter, many of which are based in Middlesex County here, other statewide and national organizations that are in support of this. So, on behalf of the Coalition, my follow-up question would be, which Freeholder would be most appropriate to follow up this meeting with a meeting with myself and with the Board of Health? Would it be Freeholder Nara, since you deal with the Board of Health?
I would recommend at first that Freeholder Nara, myself, and our health director meet first.
Okay.
And if you could leave that with our clerk.
Yes. I have copies of the letter for everyone, and I believe, I know everyone's very busy, it's a busy time, I believe Freeholder Tamar was sent the resolutions that have been passed in Burlington, Camden, and Gloucester already for the Freeholder Board, for the administrator and the attorney to take a look at, that those counties have passed. And a follow-up to that, after the county passes the resolution, is to work with us to arrange a meeting with a representative from each town. We had a Cranberry Board of Health member sign on to the Coalition letter, I believe there are more, to have a meeting where the Coalition's resources that are free of cost to the county and to the towns in the county, where we can offer that to towns who wish to adopt trap neuter vaccinate return for the unowned outdoor cats in their communities. There are a lot of grants available, a lot of resources available through our Coalition that we're willing to work with you on, so I'd appreciate that follow-up.
Thank you.
And I'll also leave a copy of our Managing Community Cats Guide for municipal leaders. This is specifically for folks like yourself and local officials, written by experts about this issue.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Amy Burke. I live at 533 Giles Avenue in Middlesex Borough, and I just want to follow up on Mr. Hackett's presentation. I serve on the Board of Health in Middlesex Borough, and our council enacted a TNR resolution in 2014, and it's going very well. So, I wanted to offer myself as a resource. People who hate cats and people who love cats want the same thing, which is all the homeless cats off the streets. And I'm happy to say that in Middlesex Borough, TNR is working. I believe my mayor would confirm, he doesn't know I'm here tonight, but I think Mayor Demira in Middlesex would confirm that TNR is working in Middlesex. You can reach me through the Middlesex Borough Clerk's Office, and that's all I have to say tonight, but I'm happy to answer questions, anyone has at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. My name's AJ Albrecht. I'm an attorney with Best Friends Animal Society. We are a national organization dedicated to ending shelter killing. I am based in New Jersey, but our address for the organization is 5001 Angel Canyon Road in Canab, Utah. I am here just to echo the sentiments of Mr. Hackett, and also to add the flavor of an organization, that this is our mission to end the killing. We have over 1,000 grassroots advocates right here in Middlesex County who are members of our organization. We work with municipalities all throughout the country to implement TNR policies. These are resolutions as well as ordinances. We have attorneys like myself on staff with decades of experience in drafting these laws, and our services are free of charge. TNR is a common sense approach to dealing with the community cat issue. I'd like to just let you know that the Department of Health, their statistics show that in 2016, Middlesex County impacted 2,776 cats and euthanized almost 20% of them. That is a consistent trend throughout the country, that the majority of animals being killed in shelters are cats, and that is why TNR is such a priority. In fact, 75% of cats that enter an American shelter will not leave alive. So, I am here today to offer the services of our national organization. I also have some resources, and I have pinned my business card to these resources. There is sample ordinance language in here, I know that you already have sample resolutions, and I implore you to adopt a resolution. I live in Essex County, we recently passed such a resolution, and I implore you to do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Laura Collins Zerflu. I'm the signatory to the letter. I live at nineteen Bunker Hill in Cranberry, New Jersey. I just want to reiterate, and I'm also a member of the Board of Health. And we fairly recently started in making sure that people were licensing their cats and we had a cat ordinance passed a few years ago for licensing of cats. And one of my biggest concerns is un-rabies vaccinated cats and the feeding of these cats goes on whether it's approved of or not and it goes on behind the scenes. And if we bring it out into the open, many more of these cats will be vaccinated for rabies and that's one of my big concerns about feral cats is making sure they're not conduits for transmitting rabies. So I just wanted to reiterate that that's important as well as animal control.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close? No. Oh. Come right ahead.
I was trying to let the TNR go first.
Virginia McGinnis Monroe Township, this is not about TNR, even though I support it and we know that. It was brought to my attention on August thirtieth that two county health inspectors were in a municipal court. They were there to file code summonses, health code summonses, according to their supervisor, which is, a letter is right here. That same day, there was also a case being heard in that court regarding animal cruelty and neglect charge against a shelter coordinator who just happens to be the girlfriend of a health inspector. It was being heard in that courtroom. Both health inspectors were, to my understanding, in the courtroom. I openly requested their time records to see if they were there on taxpayers' time. I received a letter from the director explaining away their presence in court, which in my opinion was unacceptable. Filing summonses is downstairs, which is why they were in that courtroom that day, in that courthouse. The courtroom was upstairs. When the charge of animal cruelty and neglect was filed against this coordinator, they didn't go in and inspect the shelter and check the medical records to see if they were in compliance with NJAC ACO and twenty-three A hyphen one point nine D one, which is providing animals that are sick with vet care. This animal was brought in by a vet tech in September, surrendered, it was found as a stray. The person was a vet tech and said the animal has dental issues. It was never addressed. Three months later, it was addressed after a phone call went in from the NJSPCA. The animal ended up having to have, the mouth was so severely abscessed, it had many teeth removed. And it went on to be adopted. But nevertheless, nobody went in and inspected, even though they were at the shelter. They were at the shelter in September when the animal came in. They were at the shelter in January and they were at the shelter in February and there's no mention of this in their reports. Now, the problem is in requesting the time records of these county employees, not only were they in court that day on taxpayers' time, but one of the health inspectors does not keep time records or daily activity report as per his letter from the immediate supervisor. I contacted the state wage an hour. They referred me to the federal wage an hour. I read that part of the letter to them. And according to the federal wage an hour, it is a violation of seven eighty-five point four six that everyone, everyone, is required by federal law to keep time records. So my question is, why are county employees not keeping time records or daily activity records as per law? And why are they in a courtroom on a case that they had nothing to do with on taxpayers' time? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Sputaro. I'm a Jamesburg resident and a lifelong Middlesex County resident. I am in support of TNRV. I encourage and beg the Freeholders to consider it. It is a great way of reducing the cat population. By sterilizing cats will reduce all the kittens that are out there and generation and generation after of cats that are, you know, living outside. But I wanted to say that a lot of people came out tonight, but not everybody wanted to speak. So I wanted everyone who was here tonight in support of TNRV to stand up so the Freeholders could see where a large group of people have come out in support of this. Like I said, not everybody wants to get up and speak and Mr. Hackett has spoken for us and we, many of us have signed on to the resolution letter. But I want you to see how important this is to county residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Kenny. State your name and address and you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Nancy Scalzone. I live here in New Brunswick, thirty-five-year resident of New Brunswick, lifelong resident of Middlesex County. There's a prejudice against feral and stray cats. That's not fair. As our population in Middlesex County grows, diversity and ethnicity plays a part in this. The overpopulation of cats is the result. The overpopulation is the direct result of human lack of responsibility. Rescuers, we are rescuers. We're the volunteers of many nonprofits. We need the support of public officials like you in order to effectively implement successful TNR programs. This is animal rescue. Instead, cats and caregivers are treated like petty criminals. Where is the compassion and concern for these animals, especially this time of the year when the weather changes in the spring, when the kittens are being born? We are not crazy cat people. We don't see anything crazy about wanting to help these forgotten cats who deserve and need our help. We are respectively asking the Board of Freeholders to pass this very needed resolution. Your support will signal to the elected officials of our local governments that the time for catch and kill is inhumane and very costly to taxpayers. New Brunswick, we are currently setting up a meeting to try to get TNR passed in New Brunswick. New Brunswick Animal Control is contracted to North Brunswick and in two years, they've carted almost seven hundred cats to one of the highest kill shelters in the state, spending taxpayer money and keeping them in business. So besides accepting TNR as the preferred method of controlling the cat population, it is imperative that this county move to provide Middlesex County municipalities with a regional animal shelter. The communities that have to contract, that have municipal shelters cannot handle the amount of animals, especially cats, being brought to these shelters. And by the way, there's an empty building sitting down there in Hell Meadow.
We're aware of that.
Already.
We're aware of that.
So, think about that. And pass this resolution for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Guillaume. I'm the Executive Director and President of People for Animals. Is that better? I just wanted to echo the sentiments of everyone else here who is imploring you to embrace TNVR, the humane solution for feral cat, and community cat population issues. It does address both sides of the issue. I've done, over the past seven years, I've consulted with a number of different municipalities and county boards of Freeholders, including Gloucester County, currently working with Cumberland County. I would love to work with all of you in Middlesex County. You have a shining example of a great TNR program right here in your own home county in Edison. They changed their methods of dealing with community cats a number of years ago and I think that Jay Elliott would agree that it's been a huge success. I'd love to see the rest of the county follow suit. And I'd love to add Middlesex to the list of forward-thinking humane governing bodies that are embracing this method of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Kenny, seconded by Freeholder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Let me just say one thing. The County Board of Chosen Freeholders could pass a resolution urging communities to do TNR, but we cannot force them. We do not legislate. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tomaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned.